Commissioner?
Here.
Commissioner Boyle?
Oh, yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Kavanaugh? Commissioner Duda?
Yep.
Commissioner Kraft?
I think so.
Commissioner Morgan? Mr. Chair.
Yes.
All right. Commissioner President, Commissioner Kavanaugh is next.
All right, Tom, Commissioner Borgensen first.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I just have one question, Tom. I know we talked about this a couple of years ago and then it really didn't go anywhere, but I think it's worth maybe bringing up again about that state office and the funding that we have to put into it and really don't get anything back for it. At that time, it was like four hundred and some thousand, if I remember right. Do you have any idea what it is today?
You talking about the money, the filing fees that go to the commission?
To go to the, yeah, the public, yeah.
Lincoln, yeah. I don't know, but I can tell you that they are continuously going to the legislature and getting more money. I don't know what their budget is. It's public record, I'm sure it's available. I can tell you, I was just speaking with Commissioner Boyle, that there are two homicide cases in Douglas County that I'm aware of that the lawyer, the judge appointed a public advocacy commission, one with a court defendant in the case that I had, and the other one is after the Garcia case imploded with those lawyers from Chicago and Jorgensen, Randle, Judge Randle appointed to handle the sentencing phase and the appeal. Those are the only two off the top of my head that I can think of in the last several years that they have been involved in. It's always rare. Their primary focus is Western Nebraska and, as you know, Lincoln. Lincoln uses them quite extensively as an alternate public defender's office, and I know that kind of greets on all of us up here because when we have the conflict out of a case, you, the judge appoints a private attorney and pays the rates that I showed you, whereas down there, what they're doing is appointing a public advocacy commission and the freebie.
So is there one of two things, go back again to the legislature and try to get part of our money or all of our money, in my opinion, back, or two, do we have that conversation with our judges about that, which I know will then tick off the private attorneys?
It will, it will, it will, but they, I was telling Commissioner Boyle, don't quote me on this, but I want to say they only have five or six lawyers, and what I'm saying, they primarily are dealing with outstate, you know, there'll be a shooting or a homicide and they'll end up having, if it's a two or three week trial, they end up having to go and stay in a hotel and, you know, all of that kind of stuff, and that's what they, that's what they primarily do, is high-profile cases in areas where the counties have elected not to have a public defender, which I think is a huge mistake. I'm talking about that as well. You know, that's how it's the, several counties went belly up because they didn't have a public defender and they had a, remember that cult murder in Rulo?
Yeah.
And they didn't have any public defender down there, so they appointed lawyers for, what were there, three or four defendants and that, or more, and bankrupt the county, you know, and Beatrice is kind of heading in the same direction. And I just think that that, you know, those are, you know, gambles that people want to take that I think are foolish. Luckily, that's really not an option in a metropolitan area like this, but, you know, the solution that they came up with is costing Douglas County a hell of a lot more than it's costing anyone else, and we get little or nothing in return. And to answer your question fully, if we were to say, okay, Judge, if we want you to appoint a public advocacy commission, I guarantee you what will happen is they'll take some and they'll say, we ain't taking, we ain't going to take this, we ain't going to take that, we ain't going to take the, because we don't have the resources. So that's what will happen. They'll probably do maybe a murder case, which could save a big go. That's where I think we'd go.
Do you think, though, that that would be a better way to at least try so that we have, again, a better argument or an enhanced argument as to why that's costing us? Because right now, I don't think the legislature or the state itself is listening to or understanding what it is costing us here in Douglas County.
I, well, I remember I talked with Patrick about this when we talked about it several years ago, and, you know, Patrick put, and Kubat, I think, put a bunch of numbers together. And, you know, we were, all that fell on deaf ears down there, and like I say, the Lancaster County Public Defender entities are not shy about saying, I'm not going to take this case. So I guess that I'm sure they'll take a, to get a high-profile murder case, they'll probably take it, but when you talk, talk about, let's say, four guys get charged with a drive-by shooting, or four guys get charged with a sexual assault, they may or may not take it, and even if they do, you're still going to have to pay two more, you know, for every defendant, they have to have a separate independent counsel. It's a, it's a big issue.
A couple of years ago, I went down and talked to him, Marianne. It was not a friendly conversation, but now there's a new guy.
Yeah, the person that runs the Commission on Public Advocacy now, I have a much better rapport with than his predecessor, and I think he, his line of thinking is a little bit more in sync with mine as to how people should be represented. I'd be more than happy to have a conversation with him to see how open they are to coming up here and helping out on more cases. You know, you're right, you risk the antagonism with some of the private lawyers, but honestly, the number of private lawyers who want to get on the appointment wheel has decreased a lot because the pay just isn't, there's a lot of them are just losing money when they get pointed to cases. So I will definitely, if you'd like, I'll have a conversation with him and see what he'll, what he's willing to do and get back with you on that.
Well, and again, if we can have somebody look at what that is costing us now compared to what it was a few years ago, because I'll guarantee you it's more than four hundred thousand, but at the same time, I think that will just strengthen our case as to why it's costing us, so, thank you.
Christopher Moore. Christopher Moore, you on the list?
Yeah. I, I read this, I read your letter when you sent it up, and I also listened to you today, and is the final figure that you need three hundred twenty-eight thousand, five sixty-eight, is that correct?
The what now?
We've got it as three hundred twenty-eight thousand, five sixty-eight, that gives you sixty thousand for additional person and two hundred and sixty in raises, I believe.
I, whatever the difference is between, the number we're asking for, the five or eighty, five and eighty, eight hundred thirty-seven, seven sixty-six.
Okay. Well, I, I've been a, you've made a believer out of me from where we're going, it's not because of our friendship, but the way you run the office, the way you do things, and the level of competency, excuse me if this sounds patronizing, but I'm very impressed with what you're doing, I think we need to, we need to give you, we need these minimal tools to continue what you're doing, that's my feeling.
Well, I appreciate that, and I, like I said, I do not take lightly increase in budget. I'm not, the only time I went over budget is that one year I screwed up when there were twenty-seven pay periods instead of twenty-six, you know. And so, you know, whatever it was, we had to come and ask you to help us pay the final pay period, but even this year, we're not, we're not going over. So do I juggle things a little bit? Yeah, I do, in an effort to give the, give the raises that I need to give and give the client the representation that they need, that they deserve, try to do it within the parameters of the budget.
Peter.
I'll just, and I have a great respect for your compassion and passion about your service and working from Saturday because your car will be here and so on.
Sunday, too.
Yep. That's not all we're doing.
That's my wife.
Soon you'll be telling me you need a new bed in your office.
I was like, trying to get me a couch.
But I think I'm correct that, you know, and I know you're trying to have things the same pay scale and that sort of thing, there's some pay raises that are, you know, eight percent, and, you know, the average, I think, is six and a half, when you look at all of it, I think, Joe, looking at some of that. It just, it is a tough year, and it's tough to take it all at one time, that's the only thing, and we're still looking at it, so, well, I just wanted to...
All I want to tell you is that the way I did this was, I took the payroll that we currently have. I added zero increases for the first six months, so the payroll for what it is now will be substantially the same between now and December 31st. And then I added a three percent request across the board on pay raises for the second six months. So that's, that's where my numbers come from. And what, I think what you're referring to is that, as I said, I kind of juggled some numbers around.
The increases that wanted to affect last January first?
Yes, that's right.
Because you're exactly right what you said, but your basis later because of what happened.
Right, that's right, that's right, but that's what I did. I didn't, I didn't say, I'm going to give someone an eight percent raise, or I gave raises last year, and I stayed within budget, and then Joe's right, the number on the cost of the salaries went up, but what I'm asking for is zero for six months and three percent for the second six months.
Okay.
Okay, good. Too late to notice, thanks.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. I'll write your check.
Thank you.
Item three, presentation of the Douglas County Sheriff's 2019-2020 budget request. Tony.
How's your act feeling?
I've got a PTA appointment at three o'clock. He was getting juvenile last week. Now, while he's getting set up, Tim Dunne, Douglas County Sheriff, Tom's going to be doing, shortly be doing a PowerPoint presentation on our, on our budget. With us also today is Ron Codlin, our Civil Process Service Manager, and Don Klein, Douglas County Attorney, who supports some of the, supports some of the information that Tom's going to present. Throughout this presentation, you'll hear the word juvenile, and in absolutely no way refers to any juvenile justice center. I want to say that early and often, so, Tom, go ahead.
He's talking about how the commissioners are acting in the interest of time.
Good morning, Commissioners, Tom Wheeler, Chief Deputy Sheriff. Let's get right into it here. Our current budget is seventeen, just under seventeen point one million dollars. The target that was identified by finance was seventeen point one, just over that. The amount that we're requesting today is seventeen point two-five million dollars. That amount represents a hundred and forty-eight thousand dollar increase over the target budget. Our budget is about ninety-two percent personnel and about eight percent non-personnel, equipment, supplies, training, just, and then costs to keep the lights on, that sort of thing. Sheriff's Office is responsible for civil process, for delivering all court paperwork. We, we do on about, average about thirty thousand pieces of paper a year. We have eight full-time folks that do that, and we average just under three attempts per piece of paper, so we're looking at about ninety thousand attempts throughout the year. That, we're helped in the fact that we have about twenty days on average to do most civil process. However, juvenile court is different. Most of the process that comes out of juvenile court has about a three to five day turnaround time, so the judge may issue an order on Monday, and court is going to be scheduled maybe Thursday or Friday of that week, and the folks that are involved have to be located. That can be difficult because most of the time, these folks don't want to be located, and we don't currently have the resources to investigate where they are. We get the process paperwork, it has the last known address on there, we'll try that location, if we hear of another place, we'll try that, but our process servers average about fifty pieces of paper a day that they're delivering. We currently don't have the resources to research either through social media or, or other means to try and locate these individuals. This has become an important issue because we're trying to force the county attorney's office to use their investigators to try and locate these folks, and it takes away from what they're doing in their office, what they're, what they were intended to do, and they have to sidetrack to locate these folks for juvenile court. With me today is County Attorney Klein, he is in support of our efforts to request additional staff to take care of this, and I think he's going to say something in just a moment, but before he does that, I just wanted to give you a snapshot of what we're looking at when it comes to juvenile summons. I obviously don't have 2019 complete stats, so what I have for you is the first quarter for each of the last three years, and you can see we've more than doubled the amount of summons that we're dealing with coming out of juvenile court. Currently, we're on pace for about thirty-eight hundred separate pieces of paper that we'll have to, to serve, and again, these are on a, on a very tight timeline, three to five days. If we don't get this served, what that does is cause delays in the court, and it further clogs an already clogged system. Don, if you had just a moment?
Yeah, can you slip back to the slide before? So, Don Klein, Douglas County Attorney, we, we went to the sheriff and asked for this to happen, for these two process servers on, on these cases, just to give you, and it's critical, this is, this is a critical part of, of the juvenile justice system, so, for instance, since the first of this year, we have filed two hundred and fifty cases that are either termination of parental rights or abuse and neglect cases. So on all those cases in that first four months, we have to have the parents personally served by, by the sheriff's office, okay? Or we can't proceed. And as, as Chief Wheeler said, these aren't people who are standing on their front porch waiting to get served, processed, you know, there, there's people who need to go look for them, and we can't proceed with the case until the, the parents are served. We recently had a case where the child was in foster care for, it's been over a year, because we couldn't get the, the parents served because they were truck drivers and they were going all over the country. So it's, it's critical to have this done. We, we've tried to help with our investigators, but the judges of juvenile court said, no, you, you folks, because you're a party, and the county attorney's office, you can't serve these people, it has to be the sheriff's office. So if we don't get them served, we can't proceed with the case. We've had cases that have been continued and continued and continued because mother or father haven't been served yet. Sometimes it takes us a day, twenty-four hours, just to get this on justice, so the judge can see that the parents have been served. That's something we've been working on, trying to get that expedited as far as them showing up on justice, as far as the service of process. The service has to be personal, it just can't be something that's stuck in a door and left for them, we, the process server has to hand it to the parent before, again, we can proceed. It gives, it gives the, the parent notice that the petition's been filed on the abuse and neglect or the termination of parental rights cases, so, and, and as I said, it's not simply a place of going to an address and, and serving them, sometimes it's, it's doing some research, finding out where they work, finding out when they're going to be home, find out where they've moved to, all these kinds of things are part of the process, and it's, it's a, it's a critical part of the process, and it's vital to the progression of these cases, which are the most significant cases that occur in juvenile court, the termination of parental rights, and the abuse and neglect cases. So I, I just think it's, it's so important, with all the things we talked about juvenile justice, that we have the wherewithal to get these parents served so the case can progress and we can move these children through the system who have been abused or neglected or obviously a part of the termination of parental rights. Does anybody have any questions about that part of it?
Thank you. So you said something that I think, again, triggers my question, and that is, the courts have said, we can no longer do it the way we're doing it because it has to be a deputy sheriff that serves the...
They didn't say that's, they said, what happened is, they didn't have the, the sheriff's office just didn't have the personnel to do it, so we were even asking our investigators to help, to try and do service of process, and, and they said, our investigator can't serve the process because we're involved in trying the case.
So in essence, they're saying that you can't do it, and they need to do it.
Right, which makes probably sense in the long run, the sheriff's office is able to do it, sheriff's office is able to do it, they, they, our investigators are for a different purpose than serving people process.
And how long have we been doing this, this way?
Oh, it's been this way for some time.
For years.
But the number of cases have, have gone up.
Increased.
Increased, and, and honestly, it's something that we noticed that would, would speed up the progression of the cases, because usually what happens is, we file a petition, the judge finds out we filed the petition, they'll set it for a hearing like the next day or so. Well, people aren't going to get served, and they have a seventy-two hour window, they're supposed to be served before there's a notice of hearing, so then everybody goes in, they say, well, we haven't got process served yet, so it gets continued two weeks, and then if they don't get served from that time, then it's continued another two weeks or a week or whatever. So it really, it really prohibits the process from moving along if people haven't been served. And these folks, the sheriff's office, their deputies are the experts in, in finding people and investigating that kind of part of it, and knowing how to get somebody served, which is sometimes a little bit tricky, people don't, like you said, want to always be served, and it's finding them, it's kind of cornering them and saying, here, here's the paperwork, you know? People try to avoid service.
And, so explain to me one more time, which I know you've done in the past, and you have too, but the courts also have constables that serve, correct, or not?
I don't know if they can serve this kind of paperwork.
That's what my question was.
I don't think they can.
They can't serve this kind?
Constables serve in the civil, the civil process, more of in the county court, I think there's county court lawsuits, those kinds of things.
So they can't serve these types?
I do my civil process manager here.
Constable can only serve in county court.
In county court, okay, okay, that, that answers my question, thank you.
Christopher Moore?
That was my question.
There you go. Okay, continue.
Okay.
Can I be excused then? I'll head back to you, I'm sorry, thank you.
Thanks for being here.
You gave them a lot of credibility.
Thank you.
We haven't ordered yet.
This is a breakdown of what our budgets look like over the past decade. Again, we're about ninety-three percent payroll, about seven percent overall non-payroll. Our staffing over the last decade, we were about a hundred and thirty-three deputies in 2010, and that's about the time the economic downturn started impacting hiring, and so we had, we had backed off on hiring as we made our way through that, and today we're sitting at about a hundred and thirty deputies. This is a look at budget growth versus revenue growth, and from about fourteen through fiscal nineteen, our adjusted budget has increased by eighteen percent, that's about three percent annually, and our revenues have increased in the same timeframe by about nineteen percent or maybe just above three percent annually. While we're on this slide, I don't have it on here, but just a couple of items of note when it comes to revenues. Yes, sir.
I have a question about road patrols, you know, how many are on road patrols and what the districts are, I mean, the city keeps gobbling up, how do you, you know?
That's the next slide.
Okay, we'll, we'll discuss that, and I'll answer any other questions you have about that. Before I move on to the next slide, just a couple of things I wanted to point out that we've been doing this year that will potentially impact revenues and expenditures. We recently partnered with dot com to change out all the phone systems in the sheriff's office from our landlines to internet-based phones. We calculate that that'll save the county fifteen thousand a year, every year moving forward. We'll be bringing you an alarm ordinance in the coming months. That alarm ordinance will likely mirror what the city of Omaha does, and it, although we don't have revenue forecasts nailed down yet, it'll likely exceed a hundred thousand a year. And then finally, there, there's some potential for us to contract law enforcement service for one of the area communities. We're in discussions with them right now to do that. It may be a temporary arrangement, it may be a long-term arrangement, that is, that's yet to be determined as to that being, yes. This is a population map provided by County GIS for unincorporated areas of Douglas County for the last three years, and it's starting to creep up here at about the same rate that the city of Omaha is also growing.
Wait, go back a second. The gray is incorporated?
Yeah, one moment. The gray is city incorporated, yes, and then the green is the unincorporated areas of the county. So it excludes like Valley and Waterloo, Bennington, Rolston, these are just areas that are outside of city limits.
And, well, I'm just curious, how is that considered continuous? I'm just wondering.
Because there's a little line, can't you see it?
See, yeah, there's a line, no close.
A little tiny thin line that they took.
I mean, I was just, I mean, that's what I thought, okay.
That's fine. Tricky little devils.
So looking at the population trends for Douglas County over the last three decades, in nineteen ninety, about the time the sheriff took over, we had about forty-seven thousand people in unincorporated areas. Today, we're at about eighty-two thousand. During that time, the city has completed twenty-nine annexations and added about eighty-three thousand residents to their population. While they've done that, our population continues to grow. The reason for that is building permits. If you look down below there, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, those are the building permits for residential structures that were issued over these last four years. They don't distinguish, or at least it's been described, they don't distinguish between single-family dwellings and like apartment buildings. So if we just use MAPPA's factor of two point six, which is for single-family dwellings, we estimate that during these last four years, we've added about twenty-five thousand people to unincorporated areas of Douglas County. So it has been the trend in the past, is the city annexes, and they just completed an annexation, I believe, it's going to be about eight or nine hundred people, they continue to build in the unincorporated areas. This is a, a map that MAPPA produces for us, or not for us, but that they produce, and it shows areas of growth and areas of decrease. So the green areas are the areas of the most growth in Douglas County, it's supposed to be pink, but it's kind of pinkish-white, those are areas of the greatest decline in Douglas County. Most of the areas of growth in Douglas County are outside the city limits of Omaha. So to summarize the, the request from the sheriff's office, we're requesting what comes to about less than between three-quarters and one percent over our target that's been given to us. This increase will adjust, address some of the increased demands that have been placed on us by the juvenile justice system, and, and finally, from the county attorney's perspective, adding these folks to research and locate people will free up the county attorney's office to do their job, get cases heard more quickly, get juvenile services expedited to both the family and the victims, and allow them to get their employees heard more quickly. With that, if you want to entertain any questions you may have.
Christopher Moore? Can you talk about the, I guess I missed it, but can you talk about the districts? How do you, how many districts do you have, and what are the, what do you do about boundaries with the city being all over the place?
No, that's a good question. We have, we have eight districts, and we've been in communication with the 911 Center to, to redistrict, because, you're correct, there are some of our districts that are now predominantly city, and so what we've done is just, or shipped our resources to where maybe we only in the past had one car in that district, we now have two because the district next to it is mostly city. So it hasn't, it hasn't decreased our demand for patrol service, but we are looking at, at recutting up the map to more accurately reflect both the population and calls for service.
How many deputies do you have on active road patrol sergeants and so forth?
Thirty-three patrol deputies, four sergeants, two lieutenants.
I don't mean to hammer you, but what about calls? What are you getting on calls, and what are they?
Well, we're a full-service agency, so obviously we take, we deal with everything from, from mailbox, my mailbox has been destroyed, to accidents, to assaults, burglaries, robberies. So I don't have that breakdown for you, but certainly we answer every type of call that the city of Omaha answers.
Okay, thanks. Okay, thanks. I do, I do want to ask one more question. We used to, a couple of years ago, we were talking to Marty Pele about the possibility of, you know, drawing a line somewhere, 144th or 168th or something. Figuring out, you know, years ago when Hal was mayor, I called him up, said, "Why don't you talk to the sheriff and see if you can kind of get him to take over some of the city areas?" Because, you know, they, you live in patrol area, and you're well-liked where you go, I guess. And the city is short, so what about it, you know? So I think Hal called and it worked out. I don't know. I wonder, is there, is that ongoing, or are you just, is that not even happening?
Yeah, we kept that going. What caused that was, this was in 96, we had the construction of 156 died.
Yeah.
And so, well, police were actually barricaded out of their districts, especially all that construction. So we had said that we, that we would do a prior to one, prior to two calls, juvenile service calls in those areas if they were not available.
Right.
And so we've just continued that. We never has continued that. But the talk of patrol and changing, I mean, I, I got reported, someone was in the drawer, Dick Ross, Jake and PJ.
Yeah.
Back in the mid-'90s, starting that same issue.
Never going to happen though?
Well, I mean, one side's got to give, and I'm, I'm willing to do it, but the other side is against it. So I guess that's about right.
Why don't we talk about some more, find out what they'll do?
We've, we've had that discussion, and it's a good one.
What do they have to give?
Well, I mean...
They don't want to do it.
They're not interested in that.
I think now that they have the fifth precinct, they want to see how that's going to go. Nobody's in it yet.
Okay, thanks.
Chris?
PJ?
What Mike was asking, and I know you and I talked about it, there's still a lot of responses where you have to come in because...
Oh, yeah.
There's a good delay that you're three minutes away or whatever, and they're 20 minutes away. And you can correct me if I quoted that wrong, but it happens often.
Well, good.
And they're covering that as well.
Anyone else?
Okay, thank you all.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
We're adding for presentation of the Register of Deeds/County Assessor on Department's FYI 19/20 Budget Request, which is an access to the budget topic.
Thank you, Tom.
You ready?
Yep, whoever you are.
Do I still identify myself? Diane Badiato, it's Assessor, Register of Deeds, Douglas County. Here today for the presentation for our budget request. As you know, we requested additional dollars for staffing in my upcoming budget. Our ask is a little more than 210,000 above the target, the target amount that was given to us, which represents about 3.9% of the extra, over the budget. I want to take a few minutes, I don't have a PowerPoint, so I want to take a few minutes to explain, you know, why we feel this request is so important this year. We're going to go back a few years. Several years ago, statute was passed for preliminary meetings. That was passed in 2013, went into effect in 2014. And in 2013, my predecessor asked and was granted an additional $500,000 over a two-year period for, for his budget. And that money was supposed to have been used for, to purchase equipment, computers, everything that was needed, plus additional staff to be able to handle those proposed preliminary meetings. They go from January 15th through the end of February. And depending on the volatility of the market, it depends on how many people we have coming to see us in informal meetings. So, that newly mandated those meetings, evidently for reasons unknown to nearly everyone in this room who was on the board at that time, and, and not me, because I wasn't the assessor as well, that money was not used for its intended purposes, or perhaps not even at all. So in the first year of the combined office of the Assessor Register of Deeds, the 15, 16 budget was reduced by over 253,000. To date, we've never recruited those dollars. We've had our flat budget plus the one and a half or whatever for salaries. So, the decision not to have replaced those dollars has really been a struggle and been quite costly for our office. Since that time, we've struggled, we've, we've survived, but we've struggled to continue to do so, and still continue to do so, to meet our state requirements for, for our appraisal compliance. And the main reason that we struggle is, is very simple. It's due to an insufficient number of appraisers to handle the, that growing workload. Currently, the Assessor Register of Deeds office is responsible for more than 220,000 parcels throughout Douglas County. And it doesn't make a difference to us if it's annexed in the city or not. It's just a geographic area that encumbers a lot, a lot of properties. Our statutory mandate is to inspect those properties every six years. It's a six-year cycle. And it's really been a difficult, almost impossible task for the office of 20 appraisers to handle. I just, I'd like to put that perspective into perspective for you. According to the International Association of Assessing Officers, they, they promote an ideal ratio of appraiser to parcel. And that ratio, ratio is one appraiser for every 6,000 to 8,000 parcels of property. Now, we, Sarpy County, they have close to 66,000 parcels, and they have 10 appraisers. Those appraisers are then responsible for about 6,600 parcels each. Being responsible for parcels, that's inspecting, reappraising, following the market, making sure the condition, the quality, all the characteristics of the, the properties in their assigned area is handled in an efficient and accurate manner to keep up with the market and up with the properties. We're tied into permits, we're tied into new construction, so we have a constant pulse on that market. Lancaster County, they have 112,000 parcels, just not quite, a little over half of what we have. They have 13 appraisers, and that averages about 8,500 parcels per appraisers. Now, our current appraisal staff was 20. Each one of my appraisers are handling 11,000 or more parcels on their own. So clearly, being the largest county with the most parcels and growing every year, we really need to increase the appraisal staff. I commented just a minute ago that our workload's growing. Well, between 2015 and May 3rd of this year, there's been 643 new additions platted in Douglas County. And that represents, represents a little over 6,400 parcels. So each year, we're growing. You know, we, Douglas County doesn't have a whole lot of raw land left, but we still have a substantial amount. When you figure, when you figure a site, a section of land, you can build a lot of houses in a section of land. So it's, and it's constantly growing. Based upon this trend, we expect to, you know, continue that gradual increase, therefore, even encumbering my appraisers even more. We're really at the critical mass of approaching a number that is totally overwhelming for us because of that inefficient, insufficient appraisal staff for us to conduct those prerequisite inspections every six years. So, in putting our budget together, we feel like, you know, it's time to address the situation in a more aggressive way, if you will, because we need to increase the number of our appraisers to keep up with what we're mandated to do. And to be able to do an efficient and, and aggressive and appealing job, and accurate job, you have to have the, the resources to be able to do that. But attaining knowledgeable appraisers doesn't happen overnight. And that's one of the catch-22s that you have in an assessor's office. When you hire an entry-level appraiser, they're called a lister, they're basically an apprentice, they have to go, undergo an intense, comprehensive training session, not only to teach them the, the fundamentals of appraisal in the mass appraisal industry as opposed to a fee appraisal industry. They have to learn all the nuances in, in how to call the quality, and, and adhering to all the mandates through the state that the state expects us to send them in our reports every quarter. So it's a constant, it's, it's a multi-year, anywhere from one year to two years. I don't think we've ever had, now, I don't know, of course, prior to me leaving the office, but going from lister to an appraiser who would have an area would take no less than one year, and most generally going on two years. Because once you become an appraiser, a titled appraiser, you are, you're given a market area, you are responsible for valuing that area and making sure there's, checking the anomalies and those that are out of whack, and making sure that we do the best job we can do in having all of our characteristics up to date. So your market area that you get when you become an appraiser basically is your baby. Now, of course, we have supervisor and everything to do the checks and balances, but the heavy, the heavy burden is on that appraiser. So, little over 210,000, I'm asking an extra budget money. And it'll be a win-win for all of us, not only for the state requirements, for us in the county, and most important, for all the Douglas County property owners who depend on those values to be market value and done correctly and efficiently.
Constable?
Diane, when, when your people go out, do they get out of their vehicles and walk the property, or what do they do?
Definitely. They go out, and it depends on, depends on what cycle they're in. If they're in the reappraisal cycle, they do. During the six-year inspection, we actually touch every property within the parameters of that six years. They go up, they knock on the door, they talk to the homeowners. If the homeowners are there, they ask them, you know, of course, identify ourselves. We have the fluorescent vests, we have our, our IDs, so we aren't surprising anybody. Our cars are marked Douglas County Assessor's Office. And we find out, we basically do, we try to do a verbal update with the property owner and tell them why. Because we're collecting data, tell them, you know, we have a six-year cycle and we're in your neighborhood at this time of year, because we want, because our values can only be as accurate as the data we have. So we're trying to compare what we have on our site currently to what maybe has changed or not changed. Now, mind you, we very, 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 very rarely ever get into a property. We can only get into a property on either the request or the approval of the property owner.
And what do you look for when you get in?
Basically, you look for condition, because the most, the easiest adjustment we can make to property values is condition. Quality is the type of build it was. And if it was built in by a good quality builder, that quality doesn't change. So if you've added on to your house or anything like that, most generally, you will get a permit, and we tie into that. So we would know if you added a sunroom or anything. Now, except for the people who maybe don't get the permits, then, then we're subservient to, you know, physically looking at that. When we go inside, we're looking a lot for quality, is what we're looking at.
Let me ask you a question.
I mean, excuse me, condition, so.
Let me ask you a question, probably draw a laugh maybe even, but what about, do you have any credibility in Zillow or any of those companies that set up those, I mean, they're real estate, of course, but do you have any, any faith in them?
Even realtors don't have a lot of faith in Zillow. Zillow, Zillow does a lot of data gathering. We, we're tied into Zillow, we are completely tied into the multiple listing service. In our commercial side, we have what's called LoopNet, and we have what's called CoStar. So yes, we're completely integrated with a lot of the universal programs that help us with characteristics, helps us with sales amount and things like that.
So you do use Zillow, or?
They, they look at Zillow. They look at as a, they usually look at Zillow as a comparable.
Sure.
Because they'll first look at the multiple listing. It's a lot more credible than Zillow. And will, you will look at Zillow as an ancillary, you know, say, "Okay, here's what the MLS says." But we, when we're valuing, we, we don't value off the MLS. We value off recorded transfers in the Register of Deeds office. That's how we, that's our initial step in valuing property. When a document gets recorded, it transfers property that has a Form 521 that goes to the state, that tells all the situation regarding that sale or that transfer, that's the first step in the assessor's office for valuations in those areas. So we, we'd have a sales validation team, and they go through each one of those five, those 521s, which are, which are sales. And we'll call the realtor, we'll call the owner, the buyer, the seller, the title company. If we can't determine if or not it was a valid sale, a valid sale is the only type of sales we can use to collect our data for valuation adjustments.
That's not chasing sales, though, is it?
No, 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 no.
Let me ask you a question about, you know, real estate agents, are you still licensed to real estate?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Well, in my estimation, I think if, I'm living down in the old market, okay, so people who, we're getting, you know, I get letters all the time, "Sell your condo," all this kind of thing. There are people, I believe, who know prices down there really well, and they are able to sell condos, and there's a lot of competition, and they sell property. To me, the group that really has a leg up on real estate values, what something should sell for, what something is worth and the condition, is real estate agents. And I've long thought that they would be a terrific source to, in an area they're familiar with, to be contracted by the county to tell us real estate values. I mean, they, many of these homes they've probably even been in. So I mean, you know, if you had somebody go through Dundee, 52nd and Capital, and have them drive around, they're, they sell those homes. They know what they're worth and all the rest of it. Why don't we contract with them instead of hiring regular employees and, and get caught up on valuations?
Well, we are caught up on valuations, it's just a very overwhelming task.
The six-year cycle.
Okay, there's a couple of reasons. Number one, realtors and fee appraisers deal with just that. They deal with house by house. They do not deal with mass appraisal. And just because you say of that, well, you think something will sell for that, doesn't necessarily mean that's the value. If it sells, that means what a willing buyer is agreed to pay a willing seller, which could or could not be anything close to what that realtor has decided.
So you, you're able to do that, though?
We're able to do what?
You're able to value them much better than a real estate agent?
I believe we are. Yes, we are. Definitely, definitely.
Okay.
We have, yeah, definitely.
Okay.
Because we deal with mass appraisal, which is totally different.
I don't agree with you. I think people who, I think people who are in the real estate business and know prices.
We are in the real estate business.
Well, let me finish my sentence.
Okay.
People who are in the real estate business who are listing homes and selling them, the prices are certainly able to reach valuations on homes. I just don't see that they wouldn't be able. But we don't agree, and you're not going to do it, so that's okay. That's all right.
I'll ask one question.
Constable?
How many employees do you have, any assessors? I know you have around, whatever, the number of 70-something, but how many are just on the assessor side?
Well, in the total assessor side, which is not just appraisal.
Right.
You know, we have, well, we have 24 downstairs, and we have 76 total. So it's 24, about 51, 51 or 52.
51 total employees on the assessor side, if they were separate officers.
That's homestead, that's personal property, that's, that's our archives, that's our records, yes.
Okay, that's pretty close to what I think you had thought.
That's also county supervisors.
Right. I wasn't asking just supervisors, just the number.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, thanks, Dan.
Thank you.
Item five, County GIS Department FYI 19/20 Budget Presentation. Mike Shonlaw.
Good afternoon. Mike Shonlaw, Douglas County GIS. Bring up my slides. I have 47 slides. No, I'm, I have one slide. Hopefully everyone has the handout. Okay, so I'll try and keep this brief. My one slide, hopefully sums it up. So, we are requesting a budget and expenditures amount over our target to cover two items. One item is a significant increase in our server architecture costs. A lot of that is based on demand for our services, which has been continuing to grow over the years. I kind of talk to my staff, likening this to, we, we've been building our server architecture like a MacGyver episode, you know, with paper clips and duct tape and that kind of thing. And we've reached a kind of a critical mass where we really want to do this better and, and correctly. And some of the city departments that we provide services to have asked us to, to do that as well. So we're, we're making a leap to a, some more significant server architecture. So there's some increase in cost related to that. The other item is we are requesting to hire a new position, an entry level GIs position to help us with many of the day-to-day operations and tasks that we have that frankly, we have employees that are well compensated working on lower end tasks. And we think where there's a, a good spot to have someone come in and do some of that work at the more appropriate salary level. We have not added a position in six years, so adding a position to our department is a significant deal. We have four current employees, so this would be our fifth. And to, so, so our, the amount that we're requesting over our target is about, just short of $86,000. However, in my one slide, I also point out we are going to be receiving more than that amount from the city. So actually, I'm asking for a new employee and increased money and we're actually going to save money doing it. So eight, we're $883 in the black on this. That doesn't mean the county doesn't have any kind of long-term commitment. We're hiring, we're asking to hire another employee, so that is a commitment there. But the numbers worked out this year where we've made a request to the city for an appropriate compensation for this and we've submitted all of our budget requests to the city departments and so far have not received any negative feedback. And another comment too, we are planning to receive grant money from MAPPA as we have in the past. This year's request is for the same amount as last year per their guidance and we've submitted that request to MAPPA and we should hear, hearing it in a month or two, I think, about that. That's all I have, so questions?
First of all, thank you for the kind of work you do. You've always called and asked for something and when you need it, I say five minutes ago, it's, it's there, 10 minutes before, so I appreciate it.
Thanks.
I really do, do a good job, Mike. I want to ask you with MAPPA, does that affect your budget or is that included in here?
It's included in here.
Okay. How about, are there any other GIs operations in the city or county government?
Yes. On the county side, the county assessor's office has, they actually have more GIs staff than my department has. I believe they have five GIs staff people right now. And there's also a GIs position at county engineer's office. The city has a number of GIs staff, most of them in public works, although they have, I think, three in planning, one in parks. And I want to say right now it's about 10 in public works.
Wow.
And we support all of those people at varying degrees.
Okay. I'm going to follow.
Women.
No, that's right, let him go.
So, no, you go first.
Me?
To you.
All right. Commissioner Boyle's dropped on something, Mike, and you do do a really, really good job.
Thank you.
What would happen, because I know Commissioner Boyle's thought about this a lot, not that he shares much with me, but the fact is if she said, I'm not going to use the GIs in my office anymore, I'm just moving those five employees out or whatever the number is, and I'm going to depend on you, what would happen with your department? How could you take care of it? What would you need to do that if that was the case? I think he wants to know that.
I do.
Yeah.
Sure. For us to do that, we would need some resources, some salary, some staff resources. And whether that's taking existing staff from that office who does some of that work and moving them under our office, under our guidance, or leaving them in that office but having them be under our guidance, you know, there's a couple of different models. And that's it. I mean, we could do that kind of thing and, and within a couple of years, I think Douglas County Land Records GIs would be a model for the rest of the state.
Okay, so my question, I don't want it to be misleading, so don't feel obligated to agree. I want you to disagree with me. It would seem like oftentimes, when you do something like that, you can reduce the number of people needed. If I'm merging with this other real estate company, it's probably going to work out pretty efficient as far as receptionists, marketing people, some other things that happen. Would I possibly be correct that we might be able to save two or three employees if I put it under you? Let's say I was king of the assessor's office and Mike was my chief deputy. Would we be able to save something if we talked to you and said, hey, what would happen if we did this now? Because we've just taken that over?
Maybe the best way for me to answer that is that we could do more with the existing resources than is currently being done. Could we achieve the same level of GIs services and data with fewer employees? I believe we could.
And I didn't mean to put you in the spot, but I appreciate that and it seems like, and I know it has for Commissioner Boyle for a long time, been on your, kind of the top of your list, looking at that and talking about it, that's some of us. So I appreciate your comments and also your presentation.
We've floated this several times.
Yep.
It all gets shot down there.
Yeah, we can. Commissioner Borges and Boyle.
Mine's more just a comment to thank you for your responsiveness when you are asked to put together something very quickly because you do it very quickly with the limited resources that you have.
It's mostly my staff, but yeah.
I appreciate it. You do a great job.
Commissioner Boyle.
Well, I think maybe there is another way to skin this cat. Maybe it's, I was still, it's out there. Maybe we, we go to the legislature and ask them to create in counties of a metropolitan class or whatever, a GIs office and declare it, that's what it is. And then what happens is Mike becomes the head of that and then the other employees are, you know, it's, it's a law that there's a department and I think it may, may force her to give them up or some, I mean, it, it does make any sense to have all this duplication going on. And, you know, it's just, it's really, I've got to have my own attitude, which is really ridiculous. So anyway, that's how I feel and it, maybe there's, there's got to be some other way to do this to figure it out. And, you know, the, the plan, years ago, I went down and testified for legislation that set up for every line office that we called them very kindly, that it, it put them under an executive director of our office and so they were not elected. People generally, funny enough, like to elect all their office holders, so, but anyway, it, it didn't get out of committee. And it was a bunch of conservative Republicans from Morrel County that pushed it. The senator said, how are you down here testifying for this? It was a blizzard, so I was only going to testify. A Democrat testifying for this and I said, I guess it proves pigs do fly. But anyway, there's got to be a way to do this, let's think about it.
Mr. Craft.
Yeah, I just did a quick analysis, but everybody sit here and Mike makes a request and five minutes later you have to answer for him. I think that's the reason for the budget deficit.
What, did I ask questions?
No, you're asked for, the party gets to you in five minutes. You're the reason these overwork.
Yeah. I got it. I misunderstood.
Commissioner Borges.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And Commissioner Boyle, I would hesitate just a little bit on that plan because, you know, we want local control and we want to work together and I think we just go back around again. And I fear running to the state just because we're not getting what we want is maybe not the right answer. Because then it's like, what are you going to get? So I would be willing, again, Mike did put together a great plan on how we could do what we want to do together. And I think that we should just put it back on an agenda to sit down and talk and, and see if we can make some better headway than what we have recently in the past.
Maybe what we do is put it on the, well, you look at this plan and everything, talk about it in a committee and all that kind of, and then put it on the county board agenda, agenda to merge those departments. And change payroll and everything.
The other thing, Mary Ann, is you could find out with your excellent work in the area you're moving on to July 18th or whatever. What are other counties doing? Do they have several GIs departments within that county government? You know, whether it's Maricopa or Minneapolis or whatever, you know, are they putting it together? It'd be good to know that as we start to do what you said and I, I think you're right, not going to the state legislature.
Commissioner Craft.
Do you have a feeling what other counties are doing?
Yes, I'm familiar with, at least in Nebraska, what other counties are doing. We don't have a good comparable in Nebraska. The state is the closest and we're not comparable with them. They're very different in how they function. So we often will look at other communities. Some of the common comparisons would be Polk County in Des Moines, Hennepin County in Minnesota, Sedgwick County in Kansas, Johnson County in, in Kansas City, some of those. And many of those do have a centralized GIs office. Many of those have centralized the land records GIs, the area that the assessor here manages, has been either, maybe not centralized under that office, but managed under that office. Because there are a lot of best practices that can be applied to that very important data. It really takes constant training and, and staying up with the technology to, to do that properly, so. But some of those types of environments are the best comparables that we see out there.
Commissioner Craft. And Dan Claire.
I, I just answered.
Oh, okay. Commissioner Duda.
I'm not sure why we are so determined to take Diane's employees from her, who, that really rubs us wrong, that she's got employees doing what you're doing. Doesn't rub us wrong that there's 10 people in Omaha Planning doing what you're doing. But if there's four people in her office, then that's a bad thing. And I, to me, I mean, nobody talks about that we should be doing this for Omaha Planning. Obviously, they utilize a lot of the services that you provide and then they want to have their own people to do their own work. And boy, I wish we'd get off this kick of demanding that Diane, how dare she have her own employees when we'll do it for her and we can do it better than her and we know better than her what she needs and, and we always do this right after she leaves. I, I wish we'd just focus on our own area of responsibility.
If I could just add a comment to that. Some of the plan that I put together that I revised last year addresses that very thing and I agree with you. I, I don't think it necessarily makes sense for us to take people out of departments who are experts in the business of that department and put them in a central place. But what I do believe in is having those people who have a responsibility for us, in this case, GIs technology and, and that, to have the proper tools and training and infrastructure to support them. And I just feel like the current organizational structure is not allowing that to happen. So whereas the comparison of people in the planning and public works departments, we have a much different relationship. Much more of a support relationship where we're providing support to them, we, we have established boundaries of, you know, what we provide, what they provide, where, when they come to us for things. And we just don't have that, a very similar relationship with the assessor's office. So one model of, to solve that problem is even leaving staff in that department, but let us be more involved in managing the specific GIs work that they do and how they do it.
Okay.
I think it's a win-win for everyone involved.
Thank you.
Yep.
Commissioner Boyle.
Well, the reason, I, I didn't think of it while she was here. I did bring it up to her face last time.
Yeah.
And I, I just forgot about it until he showed up and I thought, oh my God, you know, I would have brought it up to her again. I'm not really afraid of her. But I'll mention some other things. And, and there's a lot of things that we've done in the past. I mean, look at the library. We don't, you know, we, you're the one who instigated a really good contract with the city to do library. We don't have our own library system. And we don't have our own park system anymore. We had three or four, we gave them to the city. And our landfill, they don't operate a landfill, they contract with us. And purchasing, we do, we have one purchasing. Emergency planning, they don't have their own. So I mean, there are some joint things. And a jail, we took over their jail after somebody died down there. Anyway, so, you know, there, there are, these, this is a precedent. So it's not that we think we can do it better, it's that I think if we did it with him, who I think is the expert in it, then it may mean one fewer employee and that saves money. And that's what budget meetings to me are all about. So I, I like what he does. I think he's very professional and I think it's fair. So what I'm just saying is that I think we'd save money and be in good hands if he was running a GIs and everybody kind of got our stuff together. So, I mean, it's, it's not, I'm not trying to punish Diane. I tried to in the last election and failed. Kurt Ma? No.
Okay. No questions?
Thank you. Thanks, Mike. Thanks, Mike.
Moving on, item six, presentation of the Juvenile Assessment Center's budget request for fiscal year 1920.
Thanks, Mike.
And the budget packet includes the template and the organizational chart, correct? What the commissioners already have or do they need another copy of the budget template? Oh, it's in there. My bottom, just in case.
Yep.
Okay, so I have three handouts. Then I have the PowerPoint that we'll go over and then I have a fresh copy, no changes, the budget template that was sent ahead of time and the organizational chart. Mine isn't as brief as Mike's, but not as long as others'.
That's all funded either.
Good news in there.
All right. So I'm starting today, of course, with my, with the nuts and bolts of the budget request that I'll be making on behalf of the Juvenile Assessment Center. And then we'll go into a little bit of the impact of the Juvenile Assessment Center and some high points of trends that I'd like the board to be aware of. So this is a little bit of deja vu from last year's budget request. You'll see that we have increased our budget request in county general funds in the amount of $157,955 over the current fiscal year. The reason for that increase, and you'll see there on the, the last bullet there on page two, slide two. The community-based aid team accepted the county board-appointed advisory council's recommendation to cut our grant funding. And this was in no way due to any philosophical disagreement with the operations of the Juvenile Assessment Center. This was a decision made because this council, in line with the Nebraska Crime Commission, would like to push the funds to community-based organizations and they would like counties to take over the funding of assessment and diversion within the county. And so that's the rationale for them cutting back on those grant fundings and again, and again, the rationale then for my request to ask that county general funds pick up the difference in that deficit. So last year, they cut our request in half. This year, they did the same. So our grant funds were covering eight of our 13 employees and, oh, let me go ahead and switch so you can see our personnel totals there. We have 13 total personnel at the Juvenile Assessment Center. And eight of those were covered by those community-based aid grant funds. This current fiscal year, those eight employees are only covered for six months. And then the upcoming fiscal year, this grant request here, they will only be covered by those grant funds for one quarter. So eight of the staff, only one quarter grant funds. The only other grant funds we have are the $24,000 that noted there is under operating expenses, but it does not go for the JAC operating expenses. That $24,000 simply passes through the Juvenile Assessment Center and goes to community-based providers to pay directly. and goes to community-based providers to pay directly for services for you. So I just want to note that. Any questions on the funding itself before I'd like to kind of go into the Juvenile Assessment Center?
So it sort of looks like you're asking for less than eighteen thousand dollars more.
It's...
Over the target number, am I accurate?
Over the target. That is correct. That is correct, but because we're...
It's the funding issue.
It's the...
It's general, how much the general fund is funding is the issue.
Right. It looks great that we're under the target, but in reality, we are asking for more general funds. So I'm today...
How much are you asking for?
The full picture. In general funds?
Yeah.
We're asking for a total of seven hundred twenty thousand two hundred twenty-nine dollars in county general funds.
Out of your total budget of...
Total budget of the eight hundred forty-one.
So this is kind of a transition from general fund-grant hybrid to pretty much all general funds going to... Is that where we're going?
That really is, that is the trend, and that really has been. Since the inception of the Juvenile Assessment Center around fifteen years ago, a little over fifteen years ago, the grant funds that were funding the Juvenile Assessment Center were not meant to be one hundred percent. They were step-down funds from the beginning. We've been very fortunate that our legislature increased some money that in what used to be the county aid. The push over the last five years has really been for counties to not use those funds directly for things like assessment and diversion, but to give those funds to community providers and have counties assume those costs. In many, in fact, most jurisdictions, that's what's happening across the state.
Okay, so the grant funds, was it a single-source grant or were there multiple grants?
Fifteen years ago, there were multiple. So there was the Juvenile Accountability Block Grant, J-Big Funds. There were Juvenile Services Funds, and those were a federal pass-through, as were the J-Big. And then the county aid, which is our legislature, and that is now called community-based aid. And that's, was appropriated under Legislative Bill one, six fifty-one, several years ago. So that's that amount of money that we call now community-based aid. That's all local, the state, not, no federal.
These were all public grants, no private grants, is that correct?
No private, no private.
And the shift in public policy by the state from funding us to funding these community-based groups, these community-based groups are private, is that correct, or are they government entities?
Let me just note, the train, the train to do that, the board two years ago agreed with their recommendation to not fund them and the board would step in. So the state followed us. We actually triggered it and the state kind of clarified and went ahead and we solidified it. So, Sean.
Okay, so the groups, the community-based groups are public entities or private entities?
Those would be five oh one C threes in the community. It could be...
They're private.
Yes, it's not.
And so the amount that is transferring from what used to subsidize our efforts is the exact same amount, increased amount or decreased amount that's going to these private entities now?
Exact same amount. Those grants come to each county based on population and a formula. And so those same amounts then transfer towards more prevention services is the goal there.
So in eighteen nineteen, we had two hundred and forty-one thousand and change. In nineteen twenty, we're anticipating one twenty-one and change, fifty percent increase, okay. Then going forward to twenty twenty-one, would it be another fifty percent, or how does this scale down?
It would be zero, but for the fact that we will be applying for scholarship funds that would go directly to pay for youth services, so they would not fund the JAC. They will fund youth services. We'll be putting an application for that.
Okay. These youth services, would they be publicly provided or privately provided?
They're privately provided. So for instance, when a youth goes to the National Safety Council, if that family has an inability to pay eighty dollars for that class, then those funds pay for that class.
So these are like need-based scholarship type things?
Yes.
Okay. So we're at one twenty-one, would that be a sixty thousand dollar pool that then would be distributed like that? Or would it be some other number?
Whatever number doesn't fund the JAC goes into that pool to fund the rest of the community. And I don't have that, all of that, you know, takes place under the umbrella of Operation Youth Success and through that collaborative. And so really, what I'm left with is simply focusing on the budget for the Juvenile Assessment Center and what we've been approved or not approved for, so.
They have the package. If you want, they can give you the number of what was given out this year of all.
Yeah, that'd be good. So it looks like two things. First of all, this is beyond our control. It's happening, right? And at the same time, you have these thirteen FTEs in your mission, and you have numbers in here of children served and stuff like that, which is ongoing.
Right.
Okay, so you're asking for a supplement that would replace the grant funding, but you're not asking for a supplement that would go over the percent guideline?
Minimal seventeen thousand.
Okay.
Correct.
So it's just a replacement supplement that you're asking for?
That's correct.
But from a county funding point, you know, it's the general fund amount that we're funding is going up one hundred fifty-seven thousand, which is in a tax payer's account, is going up one hundred fifty-seven thousand.
And then next year, it would go up for the balance of the, until there's no grant money in this mix at all. We're just doing away with the...
That'll be next year. That'll be next year, it'll be done. They went from five hundred thousand roughly to two hundred thousand. Next year will be one, and then they'll be out other than what they applied for for scholarship.
Got you. Thank you. Commissioner Boil?
Well, and that's, the point I wanted to make is because we should have been having this discussion before this. Because even though it is under our control, because we control the community-based aid dollars in essence through Operation Youth Success, but there has been a push, and a good push in my opinion, that that community-based aid should go to the community. That's what its purpose was. But then we never had the discussion. It wasn't just an absolute that we would pick this up with general fund dollars. It should have been a discussion as to whether or not we want to do that. And so that's where we are today, in my opinion, is do we want to all of a sudden increase up to that five hundred thousand dollars the funding of this department because we've lost the grant dollars? And I just don't think we've had a good enough, thorough enough discussion of that, other than that budget, like now, is that, well, because grant funding's gone, we got to pick it up with tax dollars.
So just to clarify?
Yeah.
Okay, when you said that the fund that we got a couple of years ago was like five hundred, then it went to this two forty-one, and now it's going to one twenty-one. Is that in its entirety going to OYS, so there are now going to be a five hundred?
No, 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 no.
I would say, I would disagree a little bit that we did have a discussion.
That's not what I said. They control the community-based aid where it goes.
Right, right, right. But that money in its entirety is going that way for distribution?
To the community.
To the, just right, to the community.
The same amount?
Right.
Okay.
Right.
As I say, I would, we did have a discussion. And the discussion was, it was at the budget last year, and it talked about where this was going to tend. And I talked to everybody individually about where this was going and see if they were there, because that was the big push to let this go out of OYS. So to know where there was some, there's some discussions came up.
Commissioner Boyle?
Okay, so what do the community-based organizations do, Mary Anne? What do they do? The community-based organization that got this funding?
Yeah, so we have a juvenile plan that each person who applies for that has to say where and how their request is fulfilling our juvenile plan components. So then, and each of us appointed a person
Right.
that, you know, reviews those applications, and then those applications recommendations are brought before the OYS board for either approval or not. So there's a variety of different ones where the money goes, and it changes from year to year.
Well, I guess, I don't mean to be, please don't take this argumentative, but it's probably because of my, not being in the loop, my own fault I suppose, but it seems like we're splitting hairs. And if you look at what the JAC is doing, I don't know how this could be much more community-centered or community-involved. Look at their philosophies, intervene as early and effectively in office possible to disrupt the youth progress as a law violator and all those things. So it seems to me, when the youth serve, there are law violations, truancy referrals, and duly involved and all this stuff. I don't see how that can not be considered juvenile stuff. I mean, you're a community service, or whatever it is you use that phrase.
No, the difference is, is that it's a county department. So what the beef has been, and with even more vocal senators nowadays, is that we were using those funds to fund county operations where they felt those dollars, the intent of them, when given to communities, was to fund those community organizations.
Why don't we change the status to a community organization? She doesn't have to be an apartment.
Yeah, I think that's because of what the role that it...
Well, I'm just saying, call her that. Call her a community organization, leave her status where she is, but I'm just saying. I don't think, to me, it's all splitting hairs and...
No, I...
I mean, I just think it's, I think it's ludicrous that these are not considered, and I know you're, you know, you're afraid of the legislatures or something, but I mean, there's got to be a way around it.
No, it's not the legislature. This is the crime commission.
Well, crime commission.
And so, I mean, to Mary Anne's point, it's, the crime commission has been trending this way for a while. They, you know, they stopped funding a couple of attorneys, and, you know, it's been clear coming down that they wanted more of it to come back out, so.
And the home program too.
Yeah, and so home has been down. So, you know, the agreement was understood with, and just so you know, like Commissioner Boil was saying, the, you will get this about July, and we either say yay or nay. The power is vested in that group that's prescribed and made up. And so, like I said, that's their call. The crime commission prescribes what we say here and nay. We, when we send this in in November, the crime commission pushes it back and says, you need to make these changes and make these adjustments. You know, Catherine and Rich manage it all.
I think we ought to make some changes and adjustments and make you a community agent, wherever you could be, our contractor or something. I just think this is one of the incredibly biggest wastes of bureaucratic time. This is not to be splitting hairs over whether this is doing the community's work. Yeah, it is, and so let's figure a way out of this.
It's not in some extent, because then you're going to have to have a conversation with the county attorney in the courts about...
Face those bureaucrats.
The information, no, it's the information confidentiality that's going through the system.
Yeah, I'm not making a terroristic threat, but let's shoot him. I know, I didn't mean that. He's got a gun down the arm, down there.
More questions?
I'm just going to try and zoom through the rest of this.
Good idea.
Good luck. Sorry about that. Sorry. I'm on your side, Lee, but...
Okay, and we'll see if anyone in here catches the glaring error that's coming up in this one that'll keep people awake. Just, I don't mean to be redundant, especially for the commissioners who have been here and seen this so many times. I just really want to make the distinction, there's so much talk with the Justice Center and detention to really get back to how kids come our way. And kids come our way because in Douglas County, all legal violations and all school truancy referrals go to the county attorney by statute, and the county attorney has to make a filing decision. And so they can do three things. They can do nothing whatsoever. They can file directly in juvenile court, or they can refer the youth our way for assessment and the opportunity for diversion. Where I would like to make a more distinction from this morning's presentation, the gentleman used the word diversion quite a bit, and really, he was referring to alternatives to detention. I want to make that distinction. If a youth is detained, they do not come our way. If a youth is detained, they are filed in juvenile court, and that's a decision made, again, as you all know, by probation intake to detain those youth. So for all youth who are not detained and who are not court-involved, they can come our way, and we can then maintain our function and purpose, which is to screen and assess all those youth, to give recommendations for efficient and effective intervention and supervision level for the youth to the county attorney, and to recommend services and supports that are going to prevent those youth from further penetrating the juvenile justice system and hopefully help them to grow into productive young citizens. We do want to divert all eligible youth from court processing, and we do understand that there are some youth who need the court. We want to make sure that the court resources go to those youth who have the highest risk and needs for that level of supervision. So thank you, Commissioner Boyle. You rattled off our philosophies as if you wrote this yourself, and I appreciate that, that we want to intervene as early and effectively as possible, and I want to highlight as often as possible. Kids come back our way several times. If they get new law violations, if they're not court-involved, the county attorney does send those youth back to us to reassess, to look at their needs, to try and meet those needs. Everything we do from our assessment tools, our processes and procedures, and the programs that we refer kids to are all grounded in research and evidence-based. Our assessment results drive the system response, so we use those assessments to make our recommendations. We match risk and need areas. So if two youth come in with the same charge, we're not looking at the charge alone. We're looking at the entirety of that youth, the whole youth, all of their risk and needs, and proposing supportive treatments that will diminish reoffense for those kids. Again, kids who are coming our way are coming our way for law violations, for school truancy referrals. I'd like to point out the duly-involved youth. You guys have heard many times, youth impact is the specific way we serve youth who are involved in child welfare and juvenile justice. And then the status requests, and again, a clarification there, those are parent requests to the county attorney that are requesting their child be removed from the home, detained, really high-level requests for system involvement. And we try and assess, and put services in place for them. I want to go into just a quick data snapshot so you can kind of see the number of kids coming through. And before anyone has a heart attack, I will, I'll tell you what the glaring problem is here. On the total diverted for law violations, it should say seven hundred seventy-three, not seventy-three. That would be really embarrassing, and it probably would be seventy-two secret funding if that was the case. So a little caveat on truancy referrals. The county attorney will refer our way, youth who could be eligible for diversion for all law violations and for all duly-involved kids. We have developed a process with the county attorney's office whereby we receive one hundred percent of the truancy referrals, and we help them to do the background and sorting process of those kids. So about half of the kids who we receive truancy referrals for are actually already court-involved, are already on probation, so we're not going to end up being able to divert those kids. Those kids will be rerouted to the county attorney's office and the proper avenue there. So you see the dropdown then for the youth that come to us for screening and assessment, and then the youth we are formally able to completely divert from the court process. And again, the seven seventy-three on law violations. And that's by way of formal diversions and also warning letters that have been recommended and approved by the county attorney.
So you have, I'm reading this right, you've got one thousand two hundred twenty-two law violations, and you end up with seven hundred seventy-three that are diverted, is that right, or am I wrong?
Yes.
Okay, so the other ones in are where, down that lower number, ninety-two, one oh eight, thirteen, or?
No, those are, those are different, those are different pools of kids. So the law violations, we don't end up assessing the full twelve twenty-two. We only ended up assessing of that twelve twenty-two, a thousand one. And the drop-off comes from kids who are moving out of jurisdiction, kids who become detained between the time... And the drop-off comes from kids who are moving out of jurisdiction, kids who become detained between the time they had their first law violation and second. Refusals, no-shows, there's a drop-off between initial referral and the kids that we assess. And then there's another drop-off based on, again, refusals at the time of assessment. So you might come and be assessed and then say, you know what, I want to see a judge, I want to plead my case, that kind of thing.
Let me ask you a question. Are you involved in, or do you know of any work, I mean, OPS apparently has a pretty good program in spotting truants and trying to send them backward, or send them off to a positive area. So many, so much of the work that we get involved with is after, it's hit the fan. And I'm trying to figure out, how do we, how do we, how do we work much more smarter and invest in the stuff that stops these kids from showing up here?
I appreciate that question and the fact that you brought up Lisa Utterbeck earlier in the board meeting, that we're working really closely with OPS. And in fact, all districts have something similar to what OPS is doing. They're really trying to make their efforts more robust on the front end. By the time a truancy referral is written, often, those aren't 20 days, those kids have 60 and 80 days.
Absences?
Absent, and are even disenrolled from school. So by the time they get to the legal system, it really is a very unfortunate, you know, the kid and the family both have thrown up their hands and, you know, there's no engagement. So really working on giving information back on what we're seeing for kids' needs.
What's happened between, let's say, I don't know, let's say that Lisa Utterbeck stops, notices these kids' flags in the five. Truancy's, okay, well, how in the world does that get to sixty? I mean, hasn't somebody gone out to her house and said, my mother's an alcoholic or there's nobody home? I mean, isn't somebody doing that?
That's, that's, that, it was a meeting that Commissioner Borges and I were in three, four years ago.
Is anybody doing that now?
Well, that's the thing. One is, I think Lisa and those guys are starting a program now that's gonna start in four flares in a month next year. The, the contract they have, the what they call strive for ninety-five, which is 95% attendance in all schools. Before, they had been measuring like across the district. Now they're measuring within the schools. The policy, though, is set by each individual school district, and in some school districts, they have different policies in each school.
Sure.
With the, the example that you just gave is totally in the jurisdiction of schools. And so that's on them to go now. There's a joint position that we fund as a county and the OPS funds have that sits in their office that plays like a bat catcher. And the thing is, the school district has to exhaust all means before that kid comes to us. All means is determined different by different school districts. If it's a, if it's a west district, they may not have much resources, that's a different key. So, Cara sits down and evaluates all those. And basically, if the school district hasn't done all that they can do, they get sent back. So the discrepancy in these eighty or sixty days is in the individual schools. Now, your question is to Don, because when the, Don Klein, the meeting that Commissioner Borges and I were in a couple of years ago was to discuss this with all the superintendents. Don passed that truancy law, has the power to approve all of those districts' truancy plan. Now, he doesn't like to be head and hand, but he says this stuff in some degree. So your issue of the policy and how the school accepts it is an individual school question that I heard you. Lisa will be here, because I think that's a conversation you need to have. Because they, every year, they have a session where OPS calls in some of the community-based providers. The JAG and the county attorney's office makes a presentation to OPS's people every year saying, this is what we do, this is how you can use us. The question is, and I think you should ask Lisa when we asked her to come here, you know, how are they gonna work that to connect together? Because that's a meeting we had in this room with everybody to see where Dr. Logan and those guys, what was that plan and how we could help. So they know we're open to help them on.
Okay, well, I really think we need to do quite a bit to intercept what's going on because of, that's all I've heard. That's all I've ever heard from people who come down and complain about the location of the juveniles hall across the street, come here and all that. All they're saying, why don't you spend money to stop what's happening? We don't do windows.
Well, that wholly is not it, but the fact too is that all of that stuff up front where they're at is volunteer. If the family does not agree to come on board, they can't get them. And I know.
Well, truancy can't be voluntary.
It is voluntary, because they haven't committed anything.
Well, if they're truant from school, is there anything about being truant at the age of whatever?
At that, yeah, at that level where they're trying to get them at, it's all volunteer. Before they hit the official twenty-one, they're volunteer.
Then we need to make some, try to get some changes. I mean, you know, this voluntary crap isn't helping because I know you think it's funny, but.
No, I know. I'm laughing because we just had that fight, Mike.
We need to have it fight over, we need to win it.
Okay, I'm just saying.
This is bullshit, where we've got all these kids running around doing crap, and we end up with them in jail, and it starts this whole trail. We've got to figure it out.
I'm not disagreeing.
Ten years you've been working on, let's get this going.
I'm not disagreeing with you, but you had a whole slew of parents that just, when they made the law, they had to tweak it so, I'm not disagreeing with.
You're being too courteous, I think.
I am.
Somebody's gotta have their head slumped.
Yeah, I am, trying to play.
That must learn from that. See, now you made it count, well, maybe that, I know.
Well, I.
It's frustrating, you know, because this is what's caused so much of the problem, is these kids are coming in here and we're saying, well, we can't do anything to stop them. We can't do anything about truancy, it's all voluntary stuff. It can't be, you gotta, we gotta do something to figure it out.
So, so yes and no, Mike. Because, again, when we changed the truancy law, they took out the definition and everybody was thrown into the system, throwing them into the county attorney's office, regardless of whether they had a medical condition or not.
And maybe that was a good thing.
That was not a good thing, because we're trying to keep them out of the system.
Well, maybe we got them in the system so we can get them out, because we can't control them unless they're in the system.
That's not true, in my opinion, because that's where we met with the superintendents to say, here are some things that could be happening at the school, rather than having the county attorney and the juvenile justice system involved. Yes, that's what Lisa Utterbeck is talking about, of what she is trying to initiate. So, the point, and you kind of said it in a joking manner, I think, but, you know, having the JAG as a community provider isn't all off the wall. And the reason I say that is because we went from the county attorney originally placing kids in community organization before they got into the system. And JAG is in the system because it's ours, it's county government. And people disagree with me on that, and it blows my mind because the JAG would not exist if not for the county funding right now. And so, again, in order, our whole goal should be that we keep the children out of the system completely. And that means not even going through the Juvenile Assessment Center, because the Juvenile Assessment Center is part of the system. But you're right on that the schools need to do more, and we're working with them to do more. And I think we're making headway on that, actually.
I think they need to have a come-to-Jesus meeting, or come-to-somebody meeting, and have them come on down and, you know, explain what we want done. You know, and frankly, I'm not, I'm deadly serious about changing her operation from a county operation so she can comply with these funds. And, you know, we don't need that kind of argument, well, no, that's the county office, just get rid of it, make it something else, and, you know. I'm just saying, this has got to, this is crazy.
But to your point, Mike, and this last one I'll say on it, and I, you know, the whole, the whole big discussion you're having and people, and I don't want to bring this up, but I'm gonna leave it at that. People keep having discussions about this building, that's what the five million dollars tied for, for the building, for programs for, to get up front.
Could she get some of that five million?
We can, that five million is open to be way up in the system. Right now, every money source that she just told you that she applied for has a prescription to it. That's what the whole discussion, people have been deluding this discussion about it being a building. The five million that Sherwood is offering for the programming allows us to go up front more. That's what that money is about. So when people say that, there's money probation is gonna pay for, for people that are in the court system. Everything that people are saying, we can pay for upfront with that five million.
So the JAG could get that five million?
They get that, that's in our control.
And that takes care of the budget, I'm like, that'd be a great.
Well, no, not them, not them as a department for the services.
Well, that's why they shouldn't be a department.
Well, there's a, no.
But I mean, that's what they're doing, exactly what Sherwood talks about.
Yeah, I know, but there's a whole, well, you see the whole, because the presentation that we had in the room about the study that they're doing is gonna bring back some recommendations that probably can't. Right now, this basic level is pretty much not in that range. That level is supposed to talk about services up front. So, but with that, Sean, I'm gonna let you finish and go.
And I'll note that study too. I just want to, I just want to highlight four notable trends that I think are really critical as this board is considering not just funding each county department, but as you're looking at juvenile justice reform, I really would like to point out these four trends. So, all of the justice reform efforts are undertaking evaluations and studies and looking for not just national best practice research, bringing it here and studying our own impact and our own processes and practices. Currently, we have all of these studies and the one that Commissioner Rogers just mentioned, the category one consulting. Most of you, I believe, were present here a couple of months ago to see year one of that study. And we are currently in year two of that study. And that study will come back with some very strong recommendations about where and how the JAG should be located. We, I'd like to go on and tell you lots about all of these things. But the information that they're giving us is really helping us to improve our services to youth and families on a day-to-day basis and as we strategically plan for the future. So all of these things can be up for future discussion. I want to talk about increased ability to determine what family needs and challenges are. We've recently undertaken a training, really reexamining how we're asking questions to youth and families. We've used some guidance from the System of Care Youth Council, who has provided some feedback on how to ask kids questions. National trainer has come in to help us with this work. And we're really trying to work on our rapport building and our engagement with youth and families, again, so that we can get that buy-in on a voluntary basis. And we can get them to engage in some services in a healthy way. And to your point, Commissioner Boyle, on the truancy, this is a snapshot of truancy data here. You'll see that the highest level of need for kids is around home issues and parent communication. So when we assess every single one of the truancy kids who comes in, we see, if they're complex issues, they're not scoring in one area. The majority are scoring in five and six issue areas of these issue areas, and the highest scoring are around family and home issues. So both the justice system and the schools and all of us need to recognize that what we're talking about are really complex family, community, society issues. And so how can we work together to help with those, so it doesn't just fall in one person's purview?
Okay, so these categories, what are they for?
These are helping us to get broader snapshots. When kids have truancy issues that are rising to the level of formal truancy referrals, these are the areas we're seeing as problem issues. So we go through every single one of the truancy referrals that comes in, even those who are already court-involved. And these are the issue areas that schools are pointing out as the areas for each one of these kids.
So do we have anything in here that reflects economic disparities? Poor kids, middle-class kids, rich kids?
There's a little bit of that, but the truancy referrals don't include that information. We get into more of that when we do a formal assessment for our delinquency kids, we can get, we get into more of that. So we take broad family income, it is not included in this. And I think the schools themselves have the things on three minutes of lunch, that kind of information does not come our way. So there's that tie that we're not able to make.
Okay, the same with racial disparities? As you're aware, we have big racial disparities in the youth center and elsewhere in the system.
Correct.
Is that anywhere reflected in here?
It's not reflected in this snapshot, but we are tracking and pulling apart that data. So we would be able to speak to the disparities there, yes.
So in that previous number of the children that you actually ended up serving, the subset of all the kids, what's the racial makeup of that group?
I do not have that today. I can absolutely give you that as a follow-up.
Yeah, I'd like to see that. Do you have any anecdotal feel for that?
No, nothing that I would want on the record.
Sure, okay, but you can access that.
We, absolutely, yes, yep.
Okay.
And, you know, we coordinate with the DMC committee, our data analyst, that's on the DMC committee as well as the data committee. And so that is something that we're working on all the time, yeah.
So we're seeing that snapshot every month when we get a youth center report, Brad Alexander and his people. I mean, every single month, we get a graph that says, here's the racial distribution of our youth center population. It would be very, very helpful to see if that is systemically reflected in your population.
And that is something that the larger collaborative, so our data analyst is working with the Operation Youth Success data person who's doing the global, to make sure that they have our accurate information. Again, we're on an island, so that doesn't include arrests, but.
No, I'm sure everybody would be interested in, but if you could send it to me, email it to me, that'd be great.
I can do a follow-up to the board for sure, for racial breakdown snapshot, is that what you're looking for?
Yeah, by email?
All right, sure.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Chris Wood? On page ten, I think, let's see what Mr. Camino said, I think adding poverty would be an interesting category. Another thing is, what do you do with this information?
We've been sharing this information, we have a stakeholders group, which includes every single one of the school districts.
Okay, let me ask it a different way. I wrote down this question, what course of action?
Oh, well, well, again, we can't solve all of the issues. And so our hope is, by giving this kind of information back to the schools and also the prevention groups, any other groups who wanted, but we've shared this with prevention and schools, that they can say, okay, here's some big issue areas. How could we work on the, I see parent communication is huge.
Do you know what they do with it?
I, I don't know what their action plans.
Okay, and what about the next page on eleven? What course of treatment in, don't you think you could have suicide in there too, or is that already there?
Suicide is not on the chart. We do have the suicide statistics. So fifteen percent, and I always want to raise behavioral health concerns. It is alarming, the number of children that are coming to the formal system, again, be it arrest or school truancy, they're coming to the formal system, who have issues around serious behavioral health issues. And to the point of this last year, 21% of our kids, if you, if you also add in self-harming, 21% of the kids we assess either had suicide ideation or self-harming behaviors within the last year.
So what do we do about it, though? I know we just recorded, then we put it in the file?
Then, then that goes directly to our recommendations.
Okay, but I'm curious about, what are people doing with this? I mean, if nobody's, let me be very blunt, if nobody's doing stuff, nobody's taking action with your information, then you need to just quit collecting information?
So we, one-on-one, are using that information, of course, to serve that youth who's in front of us at that moment. And then we are also tied in with the Metro Area Suicide Coalition. And so that's a very broad range of people, and we're able to give them back that information. And having this information has helped us get those supplemental community-based aid funds for services for those youth. So we have been able to, in the past, unfortunately, the reviewers declined those requests this year. But in the past, this current year, we've had intensive family preservation services and behavioral health services as a result of this. That advisory council.
Oh.
Declined the request for those, so.
I wonder why they did that, what's the matter with them?
So, I, I don't think, did I cover all of this? And this, that, the graph in the middle, I, that's the last four years. High levels we're seeing for kids in anxiety, depression, phobias, this kind of anxiety traits that are really getting kids into trouble, keeping kids from performing well in school. This is what we're seeing for all of the youth who are coming our way, really high percentages year over year for these kids. This really showing that they need some levels of support to get back to a healthy way of being.
You know what I'd like to know, and I would like this, I'd like to know if they are getting that support.
And we can only track that while they're on diversion, for instance.
On the what?
Well, we can track that while they're on diversion. So if a youth gets on diversion, then their support, we track that.
Okay, but if you refer them to the Holy Ghost operation.
Correct.
Can Holy Ghost, can you say to Holy Ghost, what happened to these kids?
Yes, for the amount of time they were. Yes, for the amount of time they're on diversion, so we have the family science releases for that.
I don't understand what you mean, on, on the diversion. Aren't, don't you refer this to other agencies to do something about this?
Yes, to serve those kids.
Okay, well, all of those other agencies, you report back to somebody and say, okay, these kids that had panic attacks, thirty percent of them had panic attacks, and we were able to reach sixteen kids, so another forty-five who couldn't help. That's what I wanna know. So you, can you ever find that out?
Yes, we, we case manage those kids on diversion. So for every youth that we send to Holy Ghost, Holy Ghost tells us, yes, they've been here for six appointments, they're doing better. And there's a secondary tracking mechanism for those who get community-based aid dollars. They must report directly to the state for every youth that they're serving, and if those dollars...
But you don't get the information?
So we get the information for the kids we refer to the...
So aren't you referring, are, are you referring all these kids?
We are not referring all of these kids, no.
Okay, what are you referring, that back here someplace?
I, I, I apologize, I got lost.
Seven hundred and seventy-seven or something, or?
We don't refer seven hundred kids for behavioral health services or to therapy. We refer a, maybe, I'm coming up with about a ballpark of three hundred for behavioral health services. That seven hundred and seventy-three, two hundred and fifty-six of those were warning letters. So those youth didn't, did not go on formal diversion, they were diverted from the system following assessment.
Okay, well, I guess for me, the missing part is, you know, what, what happened to them? And, you know, does, I mean, if you're referring them all, and all these things are pinpointed down, but we don't know what happened, at least I don't. I don't think you have passed...
No, I think, I think the correlation, the seven hundred number you're stating is not even called here. This is a percentage of those kids out of the seven hundred now. Those kids that are, that we have referral on, we can get some information, but the other kids are probably under discretion of whoever that is. And quite frankly, I don't know if there's some other stuff that comes with that because of the health thing. So, uh, I think you could probably get the information of service and things of that, but I don't know how much name and other stuff is given there, so...
Right, um, and the, the last trend I wanna point out is, is, again, the, these commissioners all sit in many, many presentations, uh, and you hear from time to time, oh, kids on diversion are low risk, they're just first-time offenders, and I assure you, that is not the case. This is our trend for the risk of the kids that we're serving. Forty percent of the kids we're serving at diversion are moderate and high-risk youth. They are not all low-risk youth. That we have, these are all the youth who scored moderate or high in those specific domain areas. You see, sixty-seven percent of the kids we serve are scoring moderate and high in education. They have high education needs. They have high needs around personality and attitudes. Those are the kids who are getting behavioral health services. So I, I wanna start to share information that allows the, the commissioners and other stakeholders the ability to see that the kids we are attempting to take out of the formal system through our diversion is really higher-risk youth, so that only the highest-risk youth have to eat up the court resources. We're, we're attempting to serve much higher-risk kids at the level of diversion. Um, and again, twenty percent of the kids who are coming our way are previous offenders, are not first-time offenders, and that's in Douglas County. We can't track all of the counties. So that's our B-Douglas crossover, we have quite a few of those. Just to wrap up, uh, really briefly, I've already said, we, we really wanna improve how we are providing service to youth. There are many important impacts that are made through the Juvenile Assessment Center. I wanna highlight two very quickly. The cost savings to the system that, that we are able to year-over-year show is between one-point-three and one-point-four million dollars. That figure comes from Dr. Ryan Spahn's evaluation of our youth impact, where we are using a particular amount per child for those youth diverted. He is not taking into account, as the team did this morning, the long-term societal impacts and all of those things. That estimate that we are using is a very conservative estimate of direct system and court costs for those youths. So our operation is saving one-point-three to one-point-four million dollars a year, and that is not taking into account the, the savings and the benefit to youth that is improving their quality of life.
Well, that's good news.
I think so.
So you cited Dr. whom?
Dr. Ryan Spahn.
And who is that?
He's the director for the Nebraska Center of Justice Research at UNO, and they have performed some studies of our youth impact project, which include both the impact to the youth and also a specific cost-benefit study. And they've been presenting that nationally, and he's about to start a new study with us just at our local JAC.
So is this an annual assessment that he does?
No, it was a one-time, it was a one-time assessment that was done for our entire youth impact process.
So the one-time assessment that showed one-point-three to one-point-four million in annual savings?
Right, so what he found was actually a figure of fourteen-hundred-seventy-five dollars per kid savings.
Okay.
So we can simply take the youth that we divert from the system, minus the youth that we don't, and come up with that figure.
And what's the date of that study?
I believe it was twenty-seventeen, and I don't know anybody in here who would know that date more than I would know, so I'm...
What's that?
We, we, that Dr. Spahn and Dr. Wright's study that they did for youth impact, it was twenty-seventeen, wasn't it? But I could forward that, I could forward that.
That'd be great. Uh, it's a published study, I think.
It is.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Uh, item seven, last item on the budget, uh, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty budget request for emergency management.
You still here?
Was it a last?
Don't you have a flood?
Yes, sure, absolutely. Okay, thank you.
I hope you don't get one.
Just be quick.
I've been waiting six hours.
That's always my chair keeps going down farther.
We did that purposely before you sat down.
Oh, yeah, that chair.
Sure you did.
For first time.
Paul?
We'll start extra high, and then by the time it's done, I'll be back down.
In compliance with, uh, with the guidance that we're, that was being sent out to us regarding budgets, we're just gonna, we have just a few slides here to, to address the, the topics. First of all, we have our mission statement, of course, engaging, coordinating stakeholders and resources to effectively prepare, mitigate, respond to, recover from community emergencies and natural disasters, right, so it's kinda... And we do that through a four-cycle process, which is, uh, prepare and mitigate. What we do here is, uh, you know, some people say, well, this is a difficult question sometimes. What is emergency management? What do you do? And it really boils down to four things, and that is, we orchestrate, educate, coordinate, facilitate. Now, what's that mean? Well, we orchestrate, we put parties together, put people together, put groups together to, uh, address the situations that, that confront us when it comes to community emergencies and natural disasters. Then we educate them as to, uh, the defined roles that are expected, uh, to make the situation better and to actually have a disaster that moves like it's supposed to move according to federal criteria. Third thing we do is we coordinate, make sure that people are doing the right things and that we don't have multiple people doing the same thing, and so we have gaps formed. So coordination is important, and of course, the last thing we do is facilitate. In other words, we try to make things go faster, go better, go more efficiently. There's four of us in this off, in our office, not very big, uh, for a community this size, but, uh, uh, everybody reports to me, the three of us.
It's the biggest it's been in twenty some years.
Real complex there. What I'm talking to you about today is, is our, uh, need for a budget increase regarding the siren system. Uh, the broadcast signal, uh, is initiated, the new nine-one-one center. As you may or may not know, when we made that change to, nine-one-one made the change from their existing building to the new center right below us, the new equipment and new technology that's installed there is pretty robust. Based on that, the way we send out the siren signal is, is vintage, to say the least. It, uh, was installed back in the early two thousands, and some of the sirens are, have been here for quite a while, but, uh, the, uh, way that the enunciation and the computerization of the way the nine-one-one center works, uh, our current siren system, it does not integrate with that, with that system. So we have a project that is, it is underway to convert, uh, into the new system and make it compatible with the nine-one-one center. And what we're talking about here today, then, is a piece of the project that allows the return signal from the sirens to be matched, uh, with the enunciation system. If you look at two nine, twenty nineteen, this is phase one, all right? This is, this is the project that's in place at the present time. Uh, the new nine-one-one council system is being installed, uh, and the new radio system for broadcast activation is going to be installed. Uh, the controller that we have for sirens has moved, and there's a new internal switch function added, uh, down in nine-one-one. There will be new server and, of course, new software installed. We have vintage software, it's no longer supported, they won't fix anything, it's just, it's just totally obsolete. So the new software will be installed, that sets off the sirens, and then the compatibility of the whole system has to be required with the new nine-one-one controlled IT loop, which is within the campus outside, uh, at the west campus. So it's, uh, and it's done there, uh, it's actually installed that way for, uh, security reasons. What I'm talking to you today about is, is the twenty-twenty need, which is, the siren circuitry needs updating to maximize capability with the new broadcast system, all right? So that we, that the siren system that we have is not compatible with the way, uh, we want to use the software to, to sound the sirens. So if you can think of it this way, we sound the sirens, and the sirens, uh, need to be programmed to send a signal back, and that's what this project's about. It's not sending out this, the, uh, the enunciation of the tone, it's the returning of the tone back to the system so that we can, our software can define what the problems are and whether or not they went off. It'll be an automatic diagnosis of siren problems. So when the sirens sound, uh, we'll have an automatic diagnosis as, if they didn't sound what the problem was. And then a programming of the circuit boards, the radio frequency calibration, we've had some frequency drift over the years, and, uh, the voltage sensors that, uh, the drive, and the drive motors all have to be calibrated and, uh, have to be maintained. We've never, we've never really had a, a good program that did all that, and now, um, actually, time has just caught up to us, bottom line.
Wood?
Mr. Wood? I think just that's caught up with us, it's time for us to do something that's maybe nineteenth-century. I mean, we oughta get a bunch of cars and pull into sections and haul the balance instead. I, this is really, uh, this is something we should not do. I think we need to do is something you suggested, and I don't think you remember, about four years ago, uh, going to a system of alerting people by cellphone. Uh, that's what happens with, you know, the president, even President Bingbat uses that. So, you know, he came out and spoke.
Well, we're all just with the test, I'm gonna get a hamburger.
Anyway, so I mean, I think that's what we need to do. We need to change all this and do something that's, you know, millennials don't wait for this. They don't know what the hell the siren means, have no clue, and besides, I, I just think that's, you used the perfect word, vintage, that's what it is, time to let it go. I think we need a, what, what's the latest on cellphone warnings? What's the latest you have?
Well, the cellphone warnings, uh, we haven't had a warning yet, this, this season, not going around here, but...
Well, we haven't been using it, like, we shouldn't, we, don't we should, shouldn't we use it like, shouldn't we have a test like we do on Wednesdays?
Well, we've, we've sent out, you know, we've sent out some cellphone warnings.
On cellphone?
Yeah, we did that during the flood.
Okay, and did you centralize it or send it anywhere or go where?
Well, what we do is, we geopence the area that was affected by the floodwork.
Okay, well, why, let's do that instead of sirens, 'cause sirens are, I think they're really out of it. Plus, we got in a big fight with the SIDs, who pays for them, and then we've got maintenance problems. The programmings are always getting outdated, like you just said, it's all vintage. It's gonna be vintage in another ten or fifteen years or less, so let's go with cellphones and, and really plunge and do it right, I think. I'm absolutely opposed to any more funding for any more sirens. I, I don't think we're serving the community well or fairly. Do, do we cover the entire county with sirens now?
Uh, we don't cover the entire county.
Well, there you go.
We cover the populated areas. You know, there's, there's a couple of things here I wanna bring out. For one thing, most of the sire, almost all the sirens are that, uh, that are there in the field, currently cover those populated areas. Secondarily, you know, the, the sirens themselves, um, once, you know, once they're there and in place, people do rely on the sirens, and they want their sirens. Um, you know, I'd be, I'd be wrong and amiss to say that people don't want sirens, they do want sirens.
They get used to it, they have them.
Well, you know, to say, you know, we're...
If you're covering the license plates, people bitched and moaned when they went to one-dash, one-one-one, and all that crap, then went to A, and then they went to ABC, one-two-three. People bitch about it, but nobody cares anymore. People get used to things.
If, um, you know, I, I would say this, sirens do have value. I mean, people, people do want them, they see them, they have them in their neighborhoods, and we're...
They're not good in an unpopulated area.
Well, we don't have them there, but...
Well, I know you don't have them there, so if you're fishing...
Mr. Chair, can we please not have one commissioner bully their way into doing whatever they wanna do?
Well, I'm not going, I'm just asking questions.
Well, but you're dominating the conversation. Or he's trying to figure out, how do we fix up the sirens? And you just say, don't do it, end of story, quit talking, and...
We had that conversation five years ago.
We've been having this conversation since I've been here.
That's what I mean, so it's time to bring it to an end. Five years ago, he said cellphone. I'm sorry, I offended you, Claire.
Well, we don't even get down to conversation.
Well, I am.
You say your idea, that's the only idea that's allowed to be presented.
Well, I wanna continue, I, I, I hear you, but just let me know, you know, I try on the budget process and let everybody vet all of their concerns. And, um, if you're not able to do it in the budget process, I don't know where it is, so continue your question.
Well, I, I just really think that we need to get modern with this. The sirens are outdated, outmoded, they're vintage, and they'll always have programming parts. With the cellphones, that doesn't even exist. Maybe there's some, I don't know what's on the inside, not technology type, but it seems to me that if the United States government is using this, and I, I don't know if the state is or who is, I think we oughta get the program. And, I mean, even I have a cellphone.
Paul, isn't it, the, we get a message every month on all ranges of cellphones, right? So we are on the cellphone.
Yeah, you get a, you get a cellphone message, I mean, uh...
The text comes every month?
Yeah, we give you a text. That's, that's a different system, I might add.
Okay.
But it's, that's an enrollment system. We've enrolled you, so you get that, you know...
Is it, how, I mean, is it? I don't, I don't know what cellphone county is, but still, I would think you have to go multiple ways to do this. You just can't rely on the cellphone.
Absolutely, I mean...
Because somebody could be out, don't have your cellphone, and you got to...
It's true.
Keep siren.
Yeah, and the other part of that, too, is, you know, we're, we're in an area of the geography of the United States where tornadoes, they do occur, and, uh, you know, to have, to have a community that has sirens, to have a tornado, and have the death and destruction if you didn't sound those sirens.
That's always a good threat.
Well, it's, it's real.
A threat, but that's, yeah.
I remember when I was lobbying against the NRD, so they went up to the Senator and said, you don't wanna be responsible for people drowning, do you? You know, that, those things, listen, nobody's gonna die if we go from a, a siren to a telephone system. I, I guarantee you that the telephone system will be more efficient, and will be easier to operate, and will cover more territory.
The cellphone tower goes down, or something happens wrong.
Well, so do the sirens. I mean, anything can happen.
Yeah, everything can happen.
Sure.
Commissioner Kamino?
Thank you. Doctor, uh, thank you for your presentation, and thanks for your great performance. You and your staff put your best foot forward during this recent disastrous flooding emergency. I think we're all proud of you, and just, so, um, I also wanna commend you. Um, today's little discussion on these, um, budget questions, having the smallest amount of ask that, uh, any of the folks coming before us have, I think it's, uh, fifty-eight thousand nine hundred and eighteen dollars, or thereabout. Oh, there we go.
Right, right.
I'd ask, are, are we planning on taking any action on any of this today?
No, no, these are just information and expression questions.
You know, the, the total, uh... You know, the, the total, like, I've been trying to keep a running tab on, of all folks who've come before us, I think, is eight-hundred-and-seventy-two thousand four-hundred-and-seventy-four dollars.
Yeah, we have nine-hundred-thousand dollars.
Okay. We just spent, I don't know, three or four hours on that, we spent about five minutes on the one-point-three-million-dollar HDR company this morning. It's out of whack in terms of, you know, what we spend our time on and the money we spend. Again, I, I think that we should take a little more strategic view. You guys do a good job, I think this is justified, the rest of them do a good job, they're justified where they're justified at the polls, there's no doubt concerned, if the guy's on the ballot, he's going to be responsible for his ballot, for his budget. GIS, I think, does a good job. The, the Jack people, I think that was a very persuasive presentation that they made this morning on, you know, kind of stuff that's beyond their control in terms of state funding going away from the counties, this is just, you know, part of the, the trend in state government, and so, I don't know when we're going to come back to this eight-hundred-and-seventy-two thousand four-hundred-and-seventy-four thousand dollars, but I hope that it takes us a lot less than it took us today to get to a consensus on it. I would vote for all of these, thank you.
Commissioner Moore.
Well, I, I did have my hand up.
You had, no, she was on.
Okay, she's next, okay, go ahead.
Well, and again, I mean, there, there are two different issues here, and you're mixing them. This is budget, and we are talking about each of these departments who went over what we requested of them to come in with, and this is the time, whether you agree or not, it's the time to discuss, like Commissioner Boyle brought up, about the siren system. We started that conversation about five years ago, and the, the conversation I remember was, is that we were going to try to move in that direction, and the next thing I knew, we were buying sirens, and we never finished. So, so bringing it up now, i- in my opinion, isn't a terrible thing, I mean, these are things that, again, probably during a strategic plan, we should have on as the agenda and decide whether or not we want to move forward, so then, when it does come budget time, we can come back and say, hey, in our strategic plan, we decided we weren't going to go down that path, but we're going to go down this path. And so bringing that stuff up during budget time, I'm okay with, and the reason it keeps being brought up is because there was never any real decision made, other than, well, we'll talk about that later. And then the next thing you know, we're buying new sirens, or we're changing a policy, or now this, and so again, it's not a bad thing. It, it's okay to talk about, because otherwise, when are we going to talk about it? And so, I, I'm okay, and I still think that we should find a time where we can decide whether or not that is going to be a, a policy of the county or a direction, a strategic direction of the county or not. Simple as that.
Commissioner Moore?
I think very uncovered it. I was going to ask you something, if we are going to have that discussion, which I think is good, why wouldn't we do it at our county board meeting, so the citizens that hear us talking about sirens and so on, and the thoughts and the input, you know, that kind of thing is an agenda item.
It'll, you know.
At some point. I'm not sure.
It's brought up this week. And you brought up it this week, yeah.
I mean, it's okay.
We could bring it up with the budget.
Wow, nobody else can read.
Oh, no, we got it, we got, we got one thing to vote on here, we got, we're losing people, we still have agenda.
I think the point I'm just making is that, you know, we have a nine-hundred-thousand-dollar issue that you can dismiss, but the issue is to have a balanced budget, and, because if we have a balanced budget, then we don't have any implications for the tax levy. If we have a balanced budget that's not balanced, we have to make some decisions, now considering you got potential tax increases, nobody wants to do, but that, that's why we do this.
Right, exactly.
Okay.
No, you're right, you're right on.
I just want to point out, what I'm asking for here, this is, penny a month from a taxpayer.
Penny, I think you're good.
Okay, no, I get it, we get it.
Okay, okay, we're going item B, which is community services. Item one, I need a motion to lay this over two weeks.
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Kraft, second by Commissioner Boyle. Go call.
Commissioner Borgeson?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Kavanaugh? Commissioner Duda? Commissioner Kraft?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, item G is human resources. Item one is a weekly personnel report for civil services.
As presented.
Uh, the, item two is legislative issues.
That we'll be getting a wrap-up on, on information about things that affect the counties, and there's also interim studies that are already being pushed out there that will affect us that we need to pay attention to.
And the state budget we just passed.
Oh, what? Okay.
Um, item three is resolution approved with the agreement with MAPPA to coordinate the activities of business companies completely.
Motion to approve.
Uh, approval by Commissioner Borgeson, the second, the second, second by Commissioner Kraft. Go call.
Commissioner Borgeson?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Kavanaugh? Commissioner Duda? Commissioner Kraft?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, um, we do have a need for executive session for litigation, we reserve the right to enter into executive session in order to protect the public interest in respect to discussion regarding litigation, uh, and motion for an executive session.
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Boyle, second by Commissioner Morgan. Go call.
Commissioner Borgeson?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Kavanaugh? Commissioner Duda? Commissioner Kraft?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?